Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for the town of Eastchester. Today is Tuesday, April 8, 2025. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, while everyone's getting settled in, I usually take this opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to go over the ground rules. So first things first, as we've been doing for many years, we follow Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Order, which is essentially what most government, quasi-government agencies follow. The short, I guess, the footnote view of it is that action is taken by motion, vote, and resolution. And when it comes, and I'll explain because we do have a couple new applications tonight. Your application is marked submitted, so your documents or all the public record, including any documents that come in, emails, letters from the public. When you come up for your new application, our preference is that you summarize your application. You don't need to read the whole thing because it is a public record. You can do it if you want. I can't stop you. I want help. It won't hurt. It's whatever you decide. But I think the better course is to summarize your application, then the board would have an opportunity to ask questions, possibly make comments, and then we allow the public to be heard, and then the applicant would certainly have an opportunity to reply to anything the public may say. So that's essentially how the new applications work. Also, I'd like to note that as our calendar gets closer to the summer, we publish our calendar a year in advance. We do not decide any applications that are on. It's a condition to your application that it has to be heard and that it's individually deliberated upon. So any application in May will be decided the earliest in June. So I mentioned that if you want to look at your calendar for the people in the public, not the people that are obviously here. Also, we don't accept new correspondence after we close the public hearing. So people will send in emails or send in letters. The second the public hearing is struck down, the next day someone here or someone in the public wants to write an email, it will not be considered. So you're here, you have an opportunity to be heard, and certainly we prefer people who get out of their home and come here and care enough to comment. So just, that's my aside, but the new correspondence is accepted after the close of the public hearing. Tonight, we have a four-member board, and one member is only voting on one of the applications. So three of them are a three-member board. If any applications for the items being decided tonight would like to adjourn, they have the right to do so. One of our board members had an emergency and came up late. So if there's any applicant here that's here for resolution, if you would like to have your application adjourned for decision at the next meeting, you may do so. Okay, seeing nobody, we will now proceed. First, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2025 meeting. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As a matter of order, a couple of items, one that's adjourned on request, that's application 23-30. That's 249 Main Street, 27 New Street. Because that was an emergency last-minute request, I'm going to do that by motion. So I move to adjourn that matter to the next meeting, which will be May. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and out of order, I'm just going to mention that as an administrative matter, application 25-18, that's 210 Marble Deer Road subdivision. The planning board has taken the lead on that as lead agency. I make a motion to consent to their application to be lead agency. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, onto the agenda for decision. This is application 24-14. This is, I'm sorry, my fault. This is, I'm getting the sprays mixed up. We're spraying and growing. This is 22-08 for Sprague Road. I make a motion to grant the requested variance based on two conditions. And I'll, should I read them into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Condition one, following a review of the plans approved in 2020 and the project plan, it was determined that the two, what is that?
Culpex.
Culpex chambers that are operational on the property are slightly undersized by the extent of the impervious surfaces proposed by the project plan according to stormwater mitigation standards applicable at the time they were installed. Therefore, the applicant shall reduce the amount of impervious surface coverage on the property to an extent and in a configuration acceptable to the town's consulting civil engineer that would result in the existing cul-de-sac chambers being adequately sized to mitigate the stormwater impact according to the above referenced standard. No certificate of compliance shall be issued until the town's consulting civil engineer confirms that the impervious surface on the property, surfaces on the property were reduced in accordance with the requirements of this condition. That's condition one. Condition two, the use, structures, and buildings shall be installed and established in compliance with the project plan, including but not limited to the installation of all landscaping shown on the project plan, as such plan may be modified to comply with condition one of the resolution. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Conway, to the vote. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
I vote yes. The application's been approved, 3-0, subject to those conditions. Okay. Next item on the calendar for resolution, I make a motion to adopt a resolution granting the requested variances as submitted for resolution, I'm sorry, application 2509, that's 80 Park Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, to the vote. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved, 3-0. Okay. Next item on the resolution calendar, I have a motion to adopt a resolution granting the requested variances as submitted for application 25-10, 11 Maple Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, to the vote. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's been approved, 3-0. Okay, last item on the resolution calendar, I make a motion to adopt a resolution granting in part and denying in part the variances requested for application 25-15, 20 Arlington Road as follows. A side yard setback variance for the proposed outdoor kitchen counter, the proposed kitchen appliances of 3.25 feet, whereas a minimum setback of six feet is required, a deficiency of 2.75 feet or 48.88%. It's Eastchester zoning law section 40, or what is that?
4C5.
That's that, C5, sorry. A rear yard setback variance for an accessory structure, that's the outdoor kitchen counter, of 4.5 feet, whereas a minimum of six feet is required, a deficiency of 1.5 feet or 25%, and that's also Eastchester zoning law 4C5. And a variance allowing a setback from an accessory structure to the principal building of 6.25 feet, whereas a minimum of 12 feet is required, a deficiency of 5.75 feet or 47.99%. Again, that's Eastchester zoning law 4C5. Those are granted. The side yard setback variance to allow the proposed eight-foot, nine-inch tall television wall to be located within the required setback is denied. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Weber? I just want a clarification. I think the application's 25-16, not 15.
What did I say?
You said 15.
Okay, that's part of aging. It'll happen to you.
It already has.
I hope it happens slowly, the young kids. Anyway, to the vote. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
I vote yes, 4-0. That's been approved. Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Onto new business. This is application, the other Sprague Road, 24-14, 6 Sprague Road. This is a type Q action. No further seeker review is required. If the applicant comes forward, makes his presentation, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Jason Malik. I'm the property owner. With me tonight is...
Yeah, my name is Greg Ketchepoli. I'm an engineer retained by Mr. Malik.
It's been several months, as I notice this is an old application. We were here a few months ago. So if you'll indulge me, I just want to provide a recap of why we're here, what we've done in the last few months to beef up this application, to address everyone's concerns, and then I'll hand it over to Greg, and then he can provide the technical details. First, in terms of the scope of request, just a point of clarification, I want to reiterate that when we initially filed this application, part of our position was that the zoning laws allowed for artificial turf in yards in the first place, and so that was sort of an issue of statutory interpretation of the zoning law. We, and that would obviously would have had precedential effect townwide. We're not pursuing that position at this time around. So we're relying solely on a variance based on the facts of our application alone. So for that reason, there shouldn't be any precedential effect to this application. It should just be considered by the merits and the facts specific to this particular case. Now back to why we're here. When my wife and I were searching for a home in 2016, one of our biggest requirements was to have a backyard, if only a small one, which this one is. We wanted children, and we wanted a yard to play with our children. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Not the children part, we've got to die, but the yard part. We bought a house with a yard, but nearly 10 years later at this point, our grass has never survived. The lawn is basically an unusable patch of mud, rocks, and sparse grass that if you walk on it or you paw on it just a little bit, large clumps of it peel right off the soil. It's not attached to the soil pretty much at all. For years, we have tried everything to fix it. We have spent, and this is not an exaggeration by any means, tens of thousands of dollars to try to salvage the lawn. We've tried, resot it several times. We've tried different varieties of grass. We've tried thatching, aerating. We've tried watering more. We've tried watering less. We hired and we fired multiple different landscapers, none of whom could figure out the problem. We installed a rain sensor so the grass was watered just the right amount. We put in a dry well as part of our deck project from a few years ago, which this board might remember. But there wasn't enough room for a dry well in the backyard, so we installed one in the front yard and routed water that lands on the roof in the back, goes around the side of the house to the front and goes to the front dry well to try to defer as much water as we could. None of this worked. The lawn, to this day, is basically mud, and we pretty much, we almost never use it. It attracts pests, it's a nuisance, we're never on the lawn. So we thought that the problem was due to a lack of sunlight, which it could be part of it. In the summer months, when the leaves grow in on trees, the trees on my neighbor's property to the south block out virtually all the sunlight during the day. We tried trimming back the trees that, to the extent that they overhung on our property, didn't really do anything because of the angle of the sunlight. The trees are right up against the fence. It really had, it had no effect. But I think we uncovered the real cause in mid-2022 when we installed our new deck. So as part of that project, we had to drive several pylons into the ground, spanning the width of basically the entire yard to support the deck. The workers, the day that they came, they dug about a foot or two of soil, easily came up, and then suddenly their shovels went clang, and they hit crushed concrete and asphalt, and they spent the rest of the day hauling up these giant chunks of concrete. And if you look in the submission that we made before coming today, that the five, the letter where we responded to the five points for our variance application, at the end of that letter, I put in pictures of this so you can see what this asphalt and concrete looked like. And by the way, when we did our perk test a couple of weeks ago in a different part of the yard before we came here today, they found the exact same material. Same thing happened. They dug maybe a foot, and then after that, they reached concrete and asphalt. So I think it's safe to say that my entire backyard sits on top of what's effectively a landfill. Years ago, as you may know, there was a single lot. There was a different house, different structure on the property. That was purchased by a developer, as far as I understand, and he or she divided that plot into what is now 2, 4, and 6 Sprague Road. And it would appear that the developer filled the ground underneath what's now currently my yard with landfill. I don't know whether this board or the predecessor to this board approved that act or not, but it is the reality that we're in today. So for us, when we were installing our deck and we found the landfill, this was kind of like an aha moment, where we realized that no matter what we do, grass is just never going to survive on our yard, and we're not getting the property that we thought we were getting. And sadly, and I hate to say this, but we're prepared to pick up and live elsewhere if we can't figure something out and get use of the yard that we really wanted 10 years ago when we purchased this house. So that's why we want to put turf in our yard. It's obviously not ideal. No one wakes up one morning and says, "I want to put synthetic grass in my backyard." But I don't know what else to do at this point. And by the way, so I brought tonight just so you can see it, this is what it looks like. It's made to look like real grass. It's not supposed to, this is part of the sampling, like some stadiums have, you know, this very thin grass. This is not where we're putting it. We're putting in grass that's meant to look like an actual yard, has the length and the consistency and even the color of real grass. So in terms of impact on my neighbors, we've established that installing turf is not going to have any impact on anyone, zero. That's why we took so long to come back for a second hearing. I think our first hearing on this was in June, because we wanted to do all that we could to address the town engineer's questions and this board's questions to make sure that it was, we met all the satisfaction of everyone. First of all, just in terms of the site of it, we're talking about a tiny backyard that's completely surrounded by a white fence. It's visible to no one, to the extent anyone is offended or thinks it's tacky, and I respect that opinion, it might be. If you don't like it, you can't see it from the street, you can't even see it from my neighbor's yards. I and my wife, my child, and anyone who visits our house will be the only people who know that it's there. As for water runoff, which I know is the concern of this board and of my neighbor, we have gone above and beyond to ensure that there's not going to be any. As Greg is going to explain, the turf is designed to absorb water at an extremely high rate, and we're going to level off the property so it doesn't slant towards the neighbor's yard. We're also going to put an extra layer of gravel underneath the turf to retain the water, which is well beyond the manufacturer's requirements and specifications. We did a perk test that shows that the ground can easily absorb and retain water from a 100-year or more storm. And I realize that we've had a few really bad storms here in the last few years. But the truth is, is that water would run off my property today if we had, say, a 150-year storm or a 200-year storm. Water would run off of anyone's property in that case. The question here is not whether there will never be any runoff at all if I install turf. The question is, is whether installing turf would make the risk of runoff worse than what it currently is today. And on that, as Greg is going to explain, turf is going to be a significant improvement, not a disimprovement. So I'll leave it to Greg, but I just want to say one more thing. All I want is a tiny, small patch of grass to play on for my daughter. I'm not looking to build a football field or a baseball field or anything like that. I think it's a very humble ask. It's all I'm asking for, and I hope you guys grant it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. If your architect would like to supplement, please do.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Greg Ketchepoli, engineer on the project. We did go out there to perform soil tests, percolation tests, to test how fast the ground does absorb water. And as Mr. Malik explained, there is crushed gravel, rock underneath, so it perked at extremely high rates that are really not found anywhere else, 108 inches per hour. And this turf percolates at 400 inches per hour. So percolation is definitely not a concern. The water is able to absorb into the ground, number one. Number two, we are installing underneath the turf 22 and 1/2 inches of 3/4 inch gravel, which has the capacity to store up to a 100-year storm, which is a nine-inch rainfall over 24 hours. So we're not solely relying on percolation to manage the stormwater. We're actually able to store it ourselves under the turf.
I think I know what percolation means, but could you explain what that means in the context of what we're talking about?
Sure. So when the rainwater hits the grass, basically the water seeps through the ground to aquifers, to the groundwater, recharging groundwater, and the act of the water seeping through the ground is called percolation, sort of like coffee maker, right? So yeah, that's what we found, and you know, it's plenty of capacity in addition to the percolation rate. And we went over this with Kellard, the consulting engineers, went back and forth a few times, came to an agreement, and we're storing a 100-year storm.
What's the percolation rate right now of the ground?
It was 108 inches per hour. It's extreme. It's just because it's going straight through the crushed stone in the ground, you know? So there's no holdback. It's just flowing. So...
Well, before I take it to the board, Mr. Miller, you have anything else?
I do have a question.
Oh, look at you. Go ahead.
Apple, what's wrong? Where's the water going, what goes down with the crushed stone there? Because I'm trying to envision what's happening with the crushed stone as opposed to, say, my property where just, well, God, I hope. Well, it goes into dirt.
Right. It takes longer to get to groundwater or an aquifer in your property because there's probably not, I don't know how deep the gravel is, but when we do percolation tests, we test at the bottom of the limiting layer or what we're proposing. In this case, it was 22 and 1/2 inches deep, so we want to make sure that when the water hits the bottom of what we're installing, that it can actually infiltrate it. So that's where we performed our soil test between 24 and 36 inches beneath the gravel layer, and basically it seeps faster to the aquifer to recharge groundwater in this property, you know, rather than yours.
It seeps faster with the artificial turf?
Yeah, absolutely, with the artificial turf also. But, you know, in combination with the crushed stone, it's astronomically faster. Right.
Anything else? Okay. Before I open it up to the rest of the board, I just want to make a couple of points. And I guess our town attorneys will recall this dicta instead of a holding. This is kind of commentary, but sometimes things, law evolves, and many years ago, we had an issue interpreting fast casual with a restaurant, and we see another application with astroturf, synthetic grass, and I'm seeing more of it in other communities. And it may be something that the legislature, the town board, may eventually have to address. But the reason why I made that comment is because this application is really unique. sui generis was the term you used. Went back to law school, except I went back to law school way before you did, which is it's really unique in and of itself in this application. You have many years of attempting to mitigate the problem, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're almost at a last resort, and this is cosmetic. But also, you've mentioned that it also is aiding in the water absorption process. So I think those things need to come to mind because it's a little different than saying one day, let's say, for instance, very common in Florida, where we're putting down astroturf on a ornate landscape, and it's always burning. It's actually more environmentally easy to deal with. So that's an entirely different animal than what your application is. So having said that, I don't have any other questions or comments, so let me open it to the rest of the board. Mr. Conway?
I was going to echo a lot of what you just, the chairman just said here. You know, I do think this is a very unique request, unique situation and a reasonable request because of that. I know there's been some concerns about precedential impact, allowing artificial turf, but you know, this is a last resort, it seems like, here, and it's a backyard that's not visible to anybody else, and it seems like it's an enhancement to the drainage and runoff situation. So again, I think it's a very reasonable request.
Mr. Weber, any questions or comments?
No, I would agree with both of you.
Oh, thank you.
And I just wanted to point out that we did have our town consulting civil engineer review this application. They're not here this evening, but they did issue a memorandum for tonight. Their comments have been satisfied, and they actually requested the 22 and 1/2 inches of gravel underneath the sub base to retain the 100-year storm, and the applicant was amenable to adding that to the application.
Okay. And when you first walked in, I thought you really hit down hard on your irons and you were replacing the divots. Of those different choices of...
Correct. Yes.
So we're not here to, this is for the building department. We're not here to determine...
Correct. I think that the applicant probably just brought that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, just to show you what it might look like so that you can evaluate, you know, in terms of character of the neighborhood, you know, aesthetics of the product.
Less is more.
Do they have the black pellets?
I don't think so. I think that's for, like, if you're going to use turf to build an athletic field, so you want it to be soft if you hit the ground.
And you want some give too, right? So you slide a little bit.
Right. But no, I'm not going to be slamming. I'm not going to be tackling any fire. I'm probably going to be...
I like going home with pellets a little bit.
I understand.
No, that is a good point.
Yeah. And those get very hot in the summer when they're black. We have to cater to the job. It's just sun goes too hot and prep these variances. Anyway, I'm going to make an application to open this matter to the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make an application to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Board, anything further?
No.
Nothing. Mr. Conway?
Nothing.
Weber?
No, thank you.
No, I think you've answered the five-part test to my satisfaction, but also that it's, as Mr. Conway said, the precedential value is different in this application because of the circumstances and the application itself. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution to the May 13, 2025 meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay. Next item for new business is application 25-12. This is Pure Physique Scarsdale, 74 Garth Road. There's no further seeker action or review required on this. Counselor, is there any background that may need to be mentioned about this in light of other applications we've granted recently or...
We have, we have had similar applications for smaller gyms that fall under our family and recreation indoor classification and required parking variances. Particularly, we had one Total Form Fitness last year right about this time. That was similarly appointment-based only, and that was a significant factor that you relied on deciding that application. So I think you'll see similarities there.
Thank you, counselor.
Huge parking issue on that one.
Correct. Applicant, name and address for the record and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Pat Cardolemy. I'm here in regards to 74 Garth Road, Pure Physique Scarsdale. So we're here tonight for a couple of different variances. We're looking to open a personal training studio, which requires an indoor recreation facility special permit from the planning board, as well as a couple of variances that we need in regards to setbacks, parking, and hours of operation. So what I'll guess, I'll go through the couple of different variances that are requested. So first one being parking variance, there are no parking spaces at all for this piece of property. It has parking in the rear for Scarsdale Commons for the apartments, but for the commercial based businesses, there are no parking except for on-street parking. There are the parking garages that are in Scarsdale for use in the area, and there's the meters in the front of the property. Setback variances, there's four of them. Front yard for this type of use is 100 required. There's currently six feet, so it's a 94-foot deficiency, so a 94% variance. Rear, there's a required 100, it's currently zero, deficiency of 100 feet, 100% variance. Front side, 100-foot required, 19-foot current, 81-foot deficiency, 81% variance. Second side, 100-foot required, zero current, 100% deficiency, 100% variance. Already existing building, 1,500 square foot space that we're looking to occupy, it's a former Chase building, section of the building. There is a hair salon on both sides of it currently. Third variance that we're requesting is hours of operation. The law allows from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Monday through Friday, Monday through, what is it here? Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Saturday through, Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 AM. Yeah, and we're requesting Monday through Saturday from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday through, Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. Yeah, and we're requesting Monday through Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Reason why we're requesting the 6:00 a.m. start time is it's very morning-heavy business. Again, it is scheduled classes, it's not like anybody can just come in and go as they please. Small classes, four to five, sorry, five to six people classes, that will be coming in and they'll all be pre-scheduled, they're 30-minute classes, and like I said, most of it, a lot of people going to before work to come in. So those are the couple of variances that we're requesting.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
We'll see if the board has any comments or questions. Mr. Miller?
No, I mean, right off the bat, this is going to be a parking issue, but it's a parking issue for every application this town ever sees.
Just to make a point on exactly one of those pictures, where are you going to be?
So this is, it's right here, it's this building right here. So as you go from north to south down Garth Road, you come down, and this is actually, I think the first building that is actually in Eastchester, if I'm correct, and it starts here, this is the building that starts right here, it goes down, there's one suite, then there's our suite, and then there's another suite right after it, and another one right down there. And this is north to south going down Garth Road, and then this is the back of the building behind it.
Okay. Is it going to be appointment only? You mentioned classes, but what about appointments?
Yes. Yeah, it's appointment only, everything's booked online through an app, so it'll be able to max it out at a certain amount of people, which we're being between five and six people and obviously a trainer. So between five and seven people at a time will be in there.
Okay, and you'll have individual sessions also?
Yes.
Yes. What do you think the ratio was between the class sessions and the individual sessions?
So the class stations are going to be probably more morning-heavy, so that'll be the 6, 7, 7:30, 8 o'clock classes. Then once people start to go to work is where you get the more one-on-one trainings. So those will be out throughout the day, where you'll probably have the more traffic areas where there'll be more people at the stores, will probably be the more one-on-one classes. And then the classes that pick back up will be after work, so that'll be where you'll probably have some, parking issues will be when it comes to the 5, 6, 7 o'clock classes.
Okay. In the morning, obviously, the parking will be...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in that area, from what I've seen, the apartments are a lot further down, so in this area, I don't think at like 6 o'clock in the morning, there's a lot of these spots are full, because there are meter parking. So that's what I've noticed, but it could definitely be.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Conroy?
No questions from me.
Weber?
No questions.
Okay. I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Miller?
Yeah, I got to follow up with her for a moment. It's just so, the other application that was mentioned is just so fresh in my mind as to what all the issues are going to be here. Are you going to be renting the gym out to other trainers to use during the day?
No.
So it's just the two of you?
Yes, my wife is going to run it on a daily basis. She's been working for Pure Physique, it's a small franchise, so she'll be running the gym.
Is this a franchise?
It's a small franchise, yeah. They have three other locations.
Right, that does not run afoul of our, of our fast food chain provision.
Okay. Thank you.
That's seven or more locations.
Well, I'll check the word franchise in Eastchester. Okay, no further questions.
Mr. Conroy?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Weber?
No, nothing from him.
How many rooms will be located in this?
So there'll be one small office and a fit, what is it called?
Fit 3D scan.
Fit 3D scan room, where you go in and it scans your body, give you fat percentages and things like that, and then a bathroom.
Okay. And then the training room is just one?
It's just one big room, correct. We have kind of...
I have pictures of our gym.
If you could just use the microphone.
Yeah, please, I'm sorry, thank you.
So right here are pictures of the facility in Jefferson Valley. Sorry, I couldn't get them that bigger, but this is the Fit 3, I always say wrong.
Fit 3D scan.
Fit 3D scan room, it's just you step on this and you go around, and this is the basic layout, it's just machines, a little desk, and then the layout that we kind of drew up is, it's the suite on this side, space two, and it'll have a desk in the front, a little place for seats for people waiting for the classes, machines on both sides, one in the middle, an office, Fit 3D room, and a bathroom.
Okay. What Mr. Miller was alluding to earlier is, because sections of Eastchester are mature communities like this area, every new application is going to be deficient in parking. It's, so everything is legal non-conforming. Unless you went in there, did the exact same thing immediately that the other person was doing, you'd be here. And, you know, I think you've adequately addressed the concerns that I have. I was thinking, and we may still consider a condition, but you don't have any room to grow unless you're going to put people on the ceiling. I mean, there's really nowhere for you, my concern, or what I'm expressing here, is that we didn't want this to metastasize into a 15-person class, and then you have the trainer come in, and then of course, people who work there don't want to park far away, so you've got 12, 15 cars, and you're blocking. But in this instance, there's, what's the square foot of the...
1,500 square feet.
Okay. I mean, we reserve the right to impose a condition, but I have nothing further. I make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting, the May 13 meeting. Is there a second?
Can I answer a question first? Because just...
Oh, okay. I'm going to draw my motion.
As you know, thanks to you, I know a lot about the franchise law. Does your franchise agreement impose any requirements on parking, on space, on use of the gym?
No, this is the first time that the franchise has actually had to deal with anything other than somebody just applying for it and having it built. So this is the first time they've ever dealt with anybody having to go through these steps to open something like this, so this is completely new to them as well.
Are you sure the franchise agreement doesn't impose any requirements on any...
It does, yeah, it doesn't, yes. Yes.
Last one to throw in, we only use small group training. We are four to five to one trainer, that's our specialty and personal, so there won't be 12 people at once, I promise.
Yeah, and I think...
I believe trainers, that's all I ever do on table.
The planning board expressed interest in condition as well on the special permit, so that's why we would have no, no problem against that at all.
No, it's a very important point you made. I represented a franchise in Bronxville, it's not there any longer, fitness together.
And then I represented it when the litigation started.
Yes. And that franchise agreement had a lot of different requirements that could bite you, but our conditions are our conditions, we're, we've referenced whatever we're concerned about. So I'm going to make that motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at our next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Good memory. Well, it's hard not to remember when we fight against a freaking franchise.
Okay, last item for new matters, this is application 25-21, 16 gray stone circle, and this is seeker type 2 action, no further seeker review is required. Name and address for the record and please proceed.
My name is Orgy Defoe. I'm here representing my son-in-law, Joseph, and my daughter Lisa, and my grandchild born November of this past year. And basically, I'm here to explain, I guess, a little bit about the turf grass that was installed in the rear of the property. But before I do that, let me just say this. The home was just completed last year, July, August. All the permits, obviously, were completed and approved as required. I believe that some of the construction that was done on the home went above and beyond requirements. And my daughter and her husband plan to be there for a long time. Graystone, if you're familiar with it, is an inclined cul-de-sac. The house is on the upper side of the cul-de-sac, so it sits high. And from that standpoint, there is no visibility to the backyard. The, from the front, certainly no visibility at all. And the back, the neighbors pretty much are below the grade of the home, so there's really, again, no visibility. My son-in-law and daughter acknowledge the fact that they made a mistake in installing the turf prior to consulting with the board. They read the rules and the code, and his brother happens to be in the business in North Carolina, and the company that performed the installation, upon their review, I guess they felt that the coating was, were in such a way that they could do it, and in fact, subsequently, they found out that it was not permitted and they should have done it beforehand. There is four inches, four inches of gravel below the turf, as well as 38 cul-de-sacs. And I guess over the past almost year, given the abundance of rain that we've had, there's been absolutely no water issue at all, no runoff. In fact, I think the natural grass, which sits on the side and the front of the house, actually retains water, actually, a bit more than even the turf. This was done for health purposes, no pesticides, obviously, cleaner for the baby, and, you know, having seen it also in town with some of the new sport facilities, it was, it was an attractive option for, for the rear of the property. It's 100% permeable, and we hope that you would consider, you know, the era that was made in good faith and honestly, and hopefully that, you know, you can give it your blessing.
Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Miller, any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Conroy?
Yeah, what was the reason for installing the turf? I mean, I know it's an attractive option, but was there a problem with the grass or...
No, the grass was installed in front and on the side. The reason for the back, they felt it was safer, they have a pet dog as well, and expecting a first child, and they just felt it was a safer, you know, item to install than grass, you know? And again, like it or not, it has pluses and minuses, I guess, in terms of the aesthetics, in terms of who likes it, who doesn't like it. But again, the main point is that it doesn't interfere with anyone's aesthetic view because it's not, it's not really visible to anyone on the road.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Weber?
Have we had anybody look at the property?
Yeah, so we did have the town's consulting civil engineer review the application. They issued a review memo dated April 3, and the gist of the memorandum is that some additional investigation about stormwater management is probably warranted if this is an application that you might consider, you know, a resolution of approval on, just to ensure that it's functioning properly and that it's mitigating the 25-year storm.
Anything further?
Nothing.
Okay. Well, in light of that, I'll put it on the record, first of all, someone has to rush my recollection, did I close the public hearing?
We haven't opened it yet.
Okay. Because I'm leaning toward having that report come in, it would, I think it would be dispositive on the issue.
Sure.
Okay. Anyway, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay. Seeing a capacity crowd, but nobody coming forward, I make a...
Can I just say one thing? This is the zoning board of appeals, so if you're looking for the town board, they're downstairs.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I thought these were my fans.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and just with my comment earlier, we're going to leave the public hearing open on this.
Sure.
And we're going to adjourn for that report. Hopefully, it'll be in and distributed and part of the public record before the next hearing.
Sure. So what you should do is to reach out to the town's consulting engineer to discuss how best to schedule any percolation test witnessing or anything else that you'd like to discuss with them. I think you have the memorandum that was issued on April 3. So if you could reach out to them directly, or if you'd like me to put together a call, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn this, leaving the public hearing open for further discussion at the next meeting, which is May 13. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll see you at the next meeting. Okay, the only item left is I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this April 8, 2025 meeting. The next meeting is Tuesday, May 13, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conroy, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.